All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if we could all stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom, here. Mrs. Spear, too, here. Ms. Laird, here. Mr. Price, here. Ms. Ray.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held February 14th and on February 22nd, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird, yes. Ms. Bloom, yes. Ms. Spear, too, yes. Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. No walk-on items tonight?
I have none, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to, should we go right into your report?
Okay. This evening, just a couple of things before we have our guests present. We have an opportunity to do our time capsules next week, and I wanted to read you what I have as my first draft as my superintendent's letter. Ladies, boys and girls, you know, we have brand-new elementaries, right? Your brand-new schools. We're going to put a time capsule behind the nameplate next week, and I'm going to put a letter in there from me addressed to the future people, whoever that might be, that would someday maybe be tearing down our new buildings to build new buildings. So here's what I said. I said, greetings, little giants of the future. If you're reading this note, you're probably preparing to demolish this building. Looking at our beautiful new space today, it's hard to imagine it will ever be replaced. The story of a building replacement started in 2017 when the residents of Fremont generously passed a bond issue to finance the replacement of the elementary schools and the high school. Over the next four years, we designed and built the new schools and demolished the old. There were several challenges along the way. While building, we experienced steel tariffs imposed by the government that made pricing the job extremely difficult. A worldwide pandemic shut down much of the country in March of 2020. The pandemic also triggered supply chain issues and labor shortages that put a strain on our progress. It is only the cooperation between the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, the district, and our construction team that allowed us to complete our project on time and under budget. I am confident that the little giant effort on display over the last five years continues as you read this letter. I also pray that little giant pride that we have in our new spaces will be carried on into the future. Regards from the past, John C. Detweiler. So that's the letter we're going to put into the time capsule that we'll put behind the nameplate. What I thought to do tonight, board, is is ask if there's anybody who would like to pin one on regards or from the board, or if you'd like, I can change the "I" to "we," and we could all sign something. I guess I was just going to ask Mr. Price if it was something that the board would like to do. It might be appropriate to have response from the board, or if you'd like, we can just all kind of sign this and put it in each one.
It's up to what everybody else thinks. Anybody have any ideas?
What you wrote is lovely.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with.
Would be okay then if I just make this from the board and we'll all sign and draft it?
Sure.
Perfect. All right, I'll get back to you on that. Okay, that's really all I had as far as new business from me. I would like now to kind of turn it over for the work session of our program. We have Mrs. Hurt again here to help us with two different things. We're going to have world languages, a report from world languages, and then also first grade math. So, Mrs. Hurt, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Price, board members, Mr. Detweiler, Ms. Parkerhurst. I am excited again in our work session to bring you another highlight of our district academic achievement. This month, as Mr. Detweiler stated, we have two different content areas that we'll be highlighting and sharing information with you. The first is our world language department. With us this evening is Laura Ward. She is our department chair, which oversees all of our world languages. Currently, our world language population is involved with students in grades nine through 12, and it involves both Spanish and French as an option at the high school level for students to participate with. So I would invite Laura Ward to please come forward, and she's going to share some information with us. She also, at one part in her presentation, she's got a little video that she would like to show you that just highlights some of her students in action.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Laura Ward. If you don't know me, and I'm representing Brenda Whitman with her French classes, my classes, which are Spanish, and Tia Rosado, who also teaches Spanish. As we got together and talked about our highlights, we kind of all came up with that, you know, we're really proud of the speaking that we've incorporated into our lessons that that are helping the kids actually speak the language. Many, many times we meet people out in the community, and they say, oh, I took four years of Spanish, or I took four years of French, and I don't know how to speak it. So that's something we've collaborated a lot on in the last several years, trying to get that that speaking piece in. And in our classes, there's a lot of personal interaction where they're partnered together or small group together, and they're speaking Spanish the best they can, or French the best they can, and related to whichever topics that we're talking about. A couple examples, we give them conversation cards where if they're learning about clothing, they can look at the picture, talk about the clothing, ask how much it costs, talk about the color when they're the younger, the lower, the beginner levels, I guess. And then sometimes we give them conversation cards where there's questions, and they have to all share what their answers are to those questions, like, you know, what do you recommend for me to eat to be healthy, if we're talking about health and nutrition? So then they talk about the different items in the target language, being French or Spanish. Lots of little interactive games that, you know, like Go Fish, which seems young, but when they're speaking in Spanish, oh, do you have the yogurt? Yes, I have it. And they're all doing that in, you know, not in English, obviously. We, sometime when we do our food units, we give them some Kroger ads, and they have to talk about, in the target language, how much does this cost, and what are you going to buy for your birthday party? And we give them like different little conversations. They do lots of little practices all throughout the units, and then at the end of the unit, they usually, they will do a speaking test, and I don't know, we call them conversations, which is real interpersonal, so that they get that feeling of when they do have to really talk to someone in the language. The videos that we have, the first one is beginner-level conversation where they're talking, where I'm asking questions about school. The second conversation is an upper level. There's a lot of different verb tenses going on, so there are some natural and language acquisitional mistakes, but you'll still see that the student's very well able to communicate what she needs to. The, they're both very nervous because I'm videotaping them, and the second one, as soon as I shut off the videotape, she said in Spanish, she said, "Ay dios mio, quiero vomitar," which means, oh, my goodness, I want to throw up. So, so please, you know, understand how scary this is to them, but I'm very proud of them, and I, and we do these in all of our classes. I just was able to have the examples for for our department. Go ahead.
Si, me gusta la escuela porque hablo con mis amigos mucho.
Muy bien. ¿Cuál es tu clase favorita?
Mi clase favorita es química ater porque mi maestro es muy nato.
Oh, sí. ¿Quién es tu profesor?
Mi maestro es señor Rey.
¿Qué necesitas para la clase?
Necesito una carpeta y un cuaderno.
¿Y qué haces en la clase?
Haces experimentos en miércoles y tomo abuelos.
Muy bien. ¿La clase es importante?
Sí, muy importante.
¿Y cuándo tienes el almuerzo?
No tengo almuerzo en la escuela.
No?
Sí.
Gracias, amiga.
De nada.
Adiós.
Adiós.
¿Cómo estás?
Estoy bien, pero nerviosa.
Sí, está bien, chica. ¿Cuándo estás enferma, qué haces?
Tomo antibióticos y como buenos días.
Muy bien. ¿Y tuviste que ir al hospital?
No, prefiero quedarme en el pasó.
Muy bien. Dime de un accidente qué te pasó.
Cuando tenía cinco o seis años, mi hermana y sus amigas estaban saltando en la cama y de repente me caí y me rompí mi cabeza.
¿Tuviste que ir al hospital?
Sí, había mucho sangre. Así, mi padre y yo vamos al hospital.
Muy bien. ¿Y lloraste? ¿Lloraste mucho?
Sí, mucho.
Pobrecita. Y hoy me duele el estómago un poco. ¿Qué me recomiendas?
Recomiendo que vayas mucho agua y que comas la sopa de agua.
Excelente. Muchas gracias. Adiós.
So, I'm very proud of them. You know, I don't give, we don't give them the actual questions we ask. It's kind of, you know, we give them ideas and lots of personal questions throughout the chapter, and, and so if they truly dedicate themselves into it, they do leave with the opportunity of possibly, you know, becoming bilingual and having that extra, you know, language to help them in their careers in the future. So the, that interpersonal conversations, that's something we're really proud of with our department. The, the online portion now with our Chromebooks and everything, and having Google Classroom, our, our next steps are to incorporate more listening activities of, of all the different dialects and so forth. So we kind of have tackled one huge thing at a time to, to help us with all of that. And there's so many interactive activities like Flipgrid and GIMKID, which allow kids to interact with each other and still have fun with all, with the language. And we can use real, authentic materials from the internet that allow them to truly see and hear the, the language. So, another, another new thing that we're going to be doing next year, we'll be having, we're offering Spanish CCP through Tara next year, and I, I know kids are in the process of signing up for classes. There'll be two offered. The beginning Spanish one will be offered in the fall. It's a, it's a semester course, but it's very fast-paced, and it's very, it would be a very good class for our native speakers who already do have a good handle on the language to, to take this type of a class, because it will go at faster pace than, than the regular classes, and, and they'll be able to learn a variety of topics in there. And in the spring, we will be offering Beginning Spanish 2, that is probably a little more like, you know, higher level. With these courses through the college, there, there has to be a little bit of prior knowledge before going in and being really successful with them. So we've been talking to our students and I'm trying to help them decide which one, which courses are best for them to sign up for.
And who'll be teaching that CCP class?
Yeah.
You're teaching it, but it's getting college credit?
Yeah.
You've got the credentials to do it?
Yeah, I have. I'll finish it up in August, but Tara has already said that's fine, that we can get it going. So, yep, I've been spending my Friday nights getting this, doing my homework, so.
Thank you from all of us.
Yeah, yeah, it's been fun. So, thank you all for having me. I don't, do you have any questions for me?
I just want to say thank you to you and the students that participated. Thank you so much for putting your time and effort in to get the credentials to do College Credit Plus for parents that may not understand the significance of what Ms. Ward has done for us. You've heard about students that can go to Tara and take the classes. What about the students who don't have transportation to be able to participate in that? So for teachers like Mrs. Ward, who have gone through the credentialing, those students now have access to that opportunity right here, where they have their public transportation, too. So it's really, I think, a great way to open up those opportunities for as many as possible, and it takes teachers like Mrs. Ward willing to put in the extra time to do that. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm excited, so.
I'd like to say thank you for giving us a snapshot of what is going on with our students, and it's very impressive to see them exchanging in the language. I think I understood the word water, agua. I'm probably the only one in C. Good job. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward.
Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. We will switch gears to our second content highlight this evening. We will now discuss math. Now, you know that we do math in every grade level in the district, from our preschool students all the way up through 12th grade. We have a variety of math offerings. At the high school, we have math at a variety of levels within middle and high, so that we are doing our very best to achieve an opportunity for all of our students to be successful academically. The math area that I chose to highlight for you this evening is first grade math, and Dr. Pierce is with us from Lutz Elementary, and she has brought some of her teachers with us and some of her students, because one of the ways that we enrich and engage our students in our elementary math programs is the opportunity for, to allow our students to put their hands on the math and be very involved as their learners. And so, Dr. Pierce, if you would please introduce who you have with you and give us a little bit of background as to what our board members are going to hear about tonight.
It'll be exciting, that's for sure. So, thank you Fremont City School Board members. Thank you for inviting Lutz here this evening. Unfortunately, Mr. McCo, the co-principal, wasn't able to be with me tonight. He is not feeling well, so we apologize for that. And also, Mrs. Reynolds is one of the first-grade teachers that was unable to attend, attend tonight as well, so she sends her regrets for that as well. But we have wonderful things happening at Lutz Elementary, just like all of the other elementaries here in Fremont. But I would like to begin by just introducing, first of all, the staff members that I have here tonight. So, we have Mrs. McAfee, first-grade teacher from Lutz. Just give a little wave. You're all right. There you go. We have Mrs. Costilla, first-grade teacher from Lutz. We also have, I thought it would be nice this evening to hear from an interventionist that's in the elementary buildings. I'm not sure if you know what interventionists do, but they give accommodations to students so that they're able to do the same types of activities that, that the other students are doing in the classroom. So, one of the interventionists that I brought with me this evening is Ms. Colassa, and she works with first grade, so Nicole Colassa. And now, the students that I brought with me this evening, they've been waiting so patiently, is Abigail Schwolko. Abigail, you want to give a little wave? There you go. And then we have Keegan Moore. Should you wave? Okay. And then we have Charles Ball, but we call him CJ, so CJ. And then we also have Amari Calvert. So, and again, thank you, parents, for bringing them this evening, and we are truly blessed to have these great kids at Lutz. So, we are going to let the teachers begin, but before I do that, I just want you to know that what we're trying to do at Lutz Elementary, we're trying to really focus in on small-group instruction. What we notice when we do small-group instruction, students will share more with their teachers when they're in a small group versus a whole-class environment, and the teachers really get to know their students at a more academic level. I actually had a second-grade teacher that came to me this year that had just tried small-group instruction, and she said, Mrs. Pierce, I've never known my students so well as I do this year in math. So that makes me so excited. So, anyway, that's what we're trying to, to push, and what we're doing at Lutz is that small-group instruction, so that we're able to meet the needs of all students. So, we are going to go ahead and have the students come forward. So, Abigail, CJ, Keegan, and Amari, would you like to come forward? And I know that they have activities that they would love to share with you, and these are activities that they perform in the classroom. Now, just to kind of give you a picture of how all of this works, we have three first-grade teachers, and just because CJ might be in my homeroom, that doesn't mean that he's necessarily with me all the time during math. So, the students are up and rotating as the teachers are doing small-group instruction, and Ms. Colassa is there as well, that's giving accommodations for the students that need it as well. So, do you want to talk about the activities that we brought this evening? Explain, or how do we want to begin?
I was going to be last, but I guess.
Okay, okay. So, as we, we work through, actually, let's let Laura start, because my part's at the end. Laura, go ahead.
Okay. So, one of the things that, like Laura said, that we've been focusing on is a small-group guided math, and so what we do is each day, we can meet with those small groups of students. So, we started off just getting them into small groups by giving them an addition test to kind of see where they were and how we could group them. And then each day, what we do is we give an introduction using our Envision Math of the daily lesson, and then the students will rotate through four different areas. And so, one of the areas might be basic math facts and just working on different activities with that. Some of the students might be working at their seat, working on a daily review of previous learning. Some of the students might be working with a teacher in a small group, and that's targeted on the lesson that they're learning that day. And then some students will be working on a hands-on activity or a game, which are some of the things that they brought with you today to show you what they, they do in class. And then they rotate through those, all of those, through the day, or daily, so, yeah. And then Ms. Colassa also works then with small groups of students, too. So, I have the opportunity to co-teach with these ladies, with Mrs. Reynolds as well, but she's not here. So, what I do is, I'm not sure that any of my students would know that they're identified, because when I come in, they, it's a mix of kids, so we have small, flexible groupings, and so we rotate those groups based off of need. So, the data that, it will rotate our groups. So, we switch groups pretty frequently. So, based off of that, based off of flexible grouping, decides kind of where, where we float. Like, Mrs. McAfee and I just changed our groupings. We moved some kids around because we felt that things would work better, but being an interventionist in the classroom, I have the opportunity to kind of differentiate the work a little bit more. We were able to go back a little bit more with some of our students, so we're not only hitting them on grade-level content, but we're filling in some of those holes to try to catch them up.
So then what we try to do is then take the activities, see, that's my part now, is then, so everybody's kind of doing the same thing, so the same yet different. So, some of the groups might have out like number puzzles when we're like working on sequencing, and they have a selection that they can choose any number puzzle, and they go to 100. And then we'll have a group that maybe everybody is doing, writing, putting their numbers in order to 40, and then that would be a group that one of us would be assisting with, helping them get to where they can eventually pick up any puzzle and go. So, we try and take the activities and then change it, and there's, there's a differentiation then to fit the needs of all the kids. So, what we brought are some of the things that the students work on independently, so this is like their hands-on part, and so sometimes they're on their own, sometimes they're with a partner, or sometimes they're with their whole team. So, they each have something different, and so we'll kind of pair you up, and they are going to teach you how to play. They have been practicing. Keegan even had great questions, so whoever's with Keegan, you're going to be set. He was like, they might not know this, but we have practiced, and I think they are ready to share with you what we've been doing in first grade.
He sounds great.
He's got a deck of cards.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to show how really smart I am. Hi, Amari.
So, and then we both get one.
Okay. It's addition.
Addition.
Okay. Okay.
Spin the right answer.
Okay, I flip them over.
I don't think she knows what happened.
I am adorable at cards.
Excellent.
And you had seven, so he gets all of them because he had.
Oh, because he had the bigger one. Good Amari. Okay, you, you got me.
Yeah, I see there's.
Okay, 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 okay. Okay, so that means I get your two zeros. Boy, oh, boy. I'm really hitting it up.
That's upside down.
That's upside down. The nine's over here.
Here's the nine. Six and nine upside down.
That would've been great.
Nice try.
Well, I don't have to worry about this one.
85. Does Mr. Price have a lucky roll? He has 44. Yep. Wonder if she was like, "Great strategy," or was that "Pro game"?
Very well. My girls. Excellent.
91.
Is this one of your favorite math games at school?
So, what happens if I, can I go over?
Finally. I can see why this is kind of fun.
Okay.
Get the conversation going once this is finished.
Okay.
Remember.
You got it.
Oh, you got two. You're ahead of me. I only have 91, you have 95.
61.
What can you make? Should we take up the ten? Take up the shampoo down there?
That's it, I can be over 100, so I have 101.
All the games. You had to do me with the.
I don't know, what do you think about that? Should we take her? I'll take her, thank you. You're going to share a card with her? She's out of cards. So, which one do you like better? Do you like the addition topic, or do you like tens and ones? That's awesome.
Yeah, bigger than that.
I can see where correction and instruction.
Can't go higher than that.
We're openly lecture-style, saying it out loud, I love it.
Thank you, Amari. You taught me some about cards, I need to take you home with me, because I've never played cards, ever.
Well, it's nice because they can play with any type of cards they have.
What do you do? Play with more dice when you have more kids? Four, if you're playing, you'd each have your own.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, thank you. Teaching me.
Help you can.
You're a great teacher. Would you like to teach when you get older, when you grow up? I think you'd make a wonderful teacher. Oh, I should be.
Thank you, Auntie.
You get everything in there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was cute to like listen to.
Trying to find the number.
It would be so great.
Great. So, while we're cleaning up, one of the things that we were talking about with Abigail's group is she had a strategy going, so that's when the teachers do some self-discovery, like, wow, you could really add those numbers quickly. What's your strategy? Can you explain to me what you're thinking in there? So, Abigail, would you like to come up and tell them and share with everybody what you were thinking and how you're able to count those so quickly? Because that's mental math, but would you come tell them your strategy that you shared with the group?
So, I started with the bigger number, then, let's say I got a four and a one. So, I started with the bigger number, then I added one.
Beautiful, that is a wonderful strategy. So, again, and we were also talking about how we could differentiate that activity. We were saying perhaps we can just use one dice for students that are just kind of trying to figure out what those numbers really mean. Another thing, we said, "Well, maybe we would add another dice in and expand the board." So, some students were maybe rolling three, where some are rolling two and some are rolling one, but they're all participating in the same type of activity, so they're all successful. So, I just thought it was really neat when I said, "Tell me about your strategy, Abigail. Can you tell me what's going on in there?" And she was able to do that. So, I'm sure all of these children had wonderful strategies as they were standing up there. So, thank you to parents, thank you, kids, and I just have to say this, you're Lutz Eagles, you're great, because we do what? We, ah, yeah. Have a great night. Thanks again Fremont City Schools Board members, thank you.
That concludes our academic achievement highlight for this month. I've enjoyed sharing these two wonderful opportunities for you to see these two contents and provide you just a glimpse into the student learning that takes place every day within Fremont City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurd. Any questions, board, for anybody that, before we kind of let them all go?
That was fantastic. Thank you so much, and moms and dads, you should be very proud.
I think this is a great way for, one, for us to get to interact with kids and parents again, because there was too long of a time where we were either Zoom or just sitting here with nothing. And that's the whole point of being on the school board, was still being part of the school, so, and I think it's great for you guys to bring your kids in, so the kids can come up and actually interact with us, too, so it's not, you know, it helps them understand maybe the function of a school board and not to be scared, we're just parents and everyday people that like hanging out with kids and playing with them like that. So, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Okay. I think that concludes, oh, I had one other thing, I wanted to announce, and you may have gotten this, Mrs. Ray, one other level of excellence here, was given a STAR Award from the Ohio School Board Association, and STAR stands for Service, Training, Aptitude, and Recognition. Only 50 people in the, 50 board members in the state get that recognition, so Mrs. Ray, thank you very much again. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm looking over my notes, I think that's all I've got, I think we want to go with our legislative liaison report?
Yes, yep. Can't tell?
Okay, I wasn't able to be with everybody at the meeting last month, so catch up where we're at. In addition to legislative pieces and the materials that we get from those sources, there are awards. And there was one particular one that I thought stood out for a whole lot of reasons. First of all, it's a teacher from Cleveland who is among, I think, five nominees as the Teacher of the Year Award for the entire nation.
Wow.
That's fantastic. So, that's certainly a standout. I also love that his name is Kurt Russell, that creates a lot of fun, he talked about that in his interview as well. And given that last month's report was Black History Month as well, I thought it tied in nicely, too, in the fact that this is a young African-American male, and he's a history teacher. He has specialized in courses of history of the Americas, courses on race and gender oppression and equality, and some of those very topics were highlighted in exhibits that were up for everyone to take a look at at the Hayes Presidential Center. Some of those through the month of February, some of those ongoing. One in particular that I love is you can take a look at that particular year in which President Hayes was elected, and you can see all the different pieces of legislation when they were passed chronologically, and ask you to take a piece of paper and look at the criteria and put your card in the yes or no, were you eligible to vote? Would we have been eligible to vote at the time that President Hayes was elected? And John and Tom, depending on whether or not you owned property, would have perhaps put you out of the running as well, but the rest of us, the majority of us here at the table, were not. And I just thought that that was kind of interesting, something to think about. We certainly know we have a very long way to go to love each other the way that we should, we see too many things, but if you do take a look at that, it is nice to recognize progress as well. So, there's that piece, and notation for that, for the record, is the Ohio Ed Updates, also known as the Ohio Department of Ed News Clips, February edition. Okay, legislative pieces, probably the two hottest topics this year will continue to be Ed Choice, that's number one, we'll refer to that as House Bill 290. That particular one established that all students would be eligible for 5,500 or 7,500, depending on the grade level to use for private school tuition or other allowable expenses. A substitute version of the bill's been introduced, but they've not voted on whether they're going to accept that or not. So, folks at home, it kind of comes down to this, those who support the initiative, really it's in the name, their thoughts is that a parent should have a choice, they contribute the tax dollars, they should have a choice in which school those tax dollars go to. Those opposed, not everybody that's opposed to the particular bill as it's written is opposed to the choice itself, some are, based on what that might do, you know, will that put more minority students in a public school setting versus a private school and parochial? Will it create segregation? You know, you'd have to look up the supporting information to find out if that's something you subscribe to or not. But those that, it's not so much they don't support choice, it's that, as it's written, not all of the schools would be playing under the same rules. So, what you would have is certain schools, parochial, private schools, et cetera, may not be subject to all of the testing that students in public schools are, or maybe only certain pieces of it. So, you have students in this section who have to achieve and accomplish more things to hit the same end goal as other students who would be receiving the same tax dollars, and especially because schools are ranked and rated, it seems that we should all have to play by the rules. If we're going to get the same tax dollars, then we should all meet the same expectations. So, that's kind of the pro and the con. I do know that our state representative, Gary Clicks, stays up on this particular bill, so anybody that wants information can contact him, he also keeps his website pretty updated. The second piece is critical race, and we'll refer to this as House Bill 327. We've talked about critical race before. To sum the first piece of it up, it's a specific curriculum that teaches the issue of race. So, for districts that have not adopted that particular curriculum, it does not mean that they're not teaching race and equality and so on, it's one specific piece of curriculum. I get asked this frequently, are we teaching critical race in Fremont City Schools? Are we teaching? We've touched on it several times, and I believe what has happened is because the Ohio Department of Education approved to allow critical race theory, or called CRT, to be one of the optional pieces of curriculum that a school board could choose to teach. People who hear that are assuming that all schools are, and that's not the case. Here at Fremont City Schools, we have not adopted that particular piece of curriculum, we've had a lot of meetings to talk about other curriculum that we use to teach about equality, treating one another well, and so on. There's been a substitute bill that's been created, and I'm just going to read this for you. This particular substitute, it's interesting, it would prohibit school districts and state agencies, among others, from teaching, advocating, and promoting decisive concepts and allowing the Ohio Department of Ed to withhold funding for non-compliance. So, in the substitute bill, they're trying to define divisive a little bit more, and they've backed off a little bit. Yes, in this revision, they've backed off a little bit on, okay, if you're not complying, do we really have the right to withhold funding? It's a hot topic, folks, because people are either really for or they're really against this, and I think a lot of that is because, like so many topics, there's been some media spin on it, and not all the information is in a Facebook post or in a real short snippet. So, I just want to say this, I think we all can agree, teaching our students to treat one another equally, respect one another equally, and for us to provide equal opportunity, accept one another as a group, and respect their individualities alike, I think we were all taught that growing up. We need to continue to instill that in our children. And while I think most of us here are very cautious of things that we would call extremism, no one likes things that are extreme, it's all this way or this way. And I think that's what this bill is trying to prevent. There is a particular piece of curriculum that some consider extreme, so they're trying to come up with this legislative way to ban it. The rub is this, how do you define divisive? Because the very same groups that may not want anything close to a CRT taught in school might also not support something that's been called cancer, or cancel culture, you know, where all of a sudden Dr. Seuss books were taken away and Disney movies were taken away. That's kind of the thing that can happen when you start dividing, you know, when the government starts defining things like devices and, you know, that sort of thing. So, at this point, I think there's a lot in flux. I'm not recommending that we have to take any kind of position. Lori, in years past, when there's been proposed legislation, like Ed Choice, for example, as a board, we wrote a letter in opposition to Ed Choice in the way it was written, not entirely. I don't think that there's enough definition in this right now for us to maybe take a position on, but each board member has the right to make a motion and ask that we take some sort of action at any time, and then the group can decide if we're going to do that collectively or not. But that's where we're at right now, and there was a lot of info. Any questions? You look like you're thinking, bye.
Just look like I am.
I always love to know your thoughts.
Right now, I'm kind of not really, just listening and trying to absorb and feeling like I should have studied and searched in some of the things you're talking about, so I know a little more about it.
I think the Ed Choice thing, all we're doing is muddying the waters even more. I mean, I'm all about choice. For me personally, I want to be able to choose where my kid is going to get educated, I have that right. To try to say that my tax dollars need to go to a certain area, any of my other tax dollars, I don't necessarily have it pigeon-
The second piece is critical race, and we'll refer to this as House Bill 327. We've talked about critical race before. To sum the first piece of it up, it's a specific curriculum that teaches the issue of race. So for districts that have not adopted that particular curriculum, it does not mean that they're not teaching race and equality and so on. It's one specific piece of curriculum. I get asked this frequently, are we teaching critical race in Fremont City Schools? Are we teaching? We've touched on it several times, and I believe what has happened is because the Ohio Department of Education approved to allow critical race theory, or called CRT, to be one of the optional pieces of curriculum that a school board could choose to teach. People who hear that are assuming that all schools are. And, and that's not the case. Here at Fremont City Schools, we have not adopted that particular piece of curriculum. We've had a lot of meetings to talk about other curriculum that we use to teach about equality, treating one another well, and so on. There's been a substitute bill that's been created, and I'm just going to read this for you. This particular substitute, it's interesting. It would prohibit school districts and state agencies, among others, from teaching, advocating, and promoting decisive concepts and allowing the Ohio Department of Ed to withhold funding for non-compliance. So in, in the substitute bill, they're trying to define divisive a little bit more. And they've backed off a little bit.
Good luck with that, right?
Yes, in this revision, they've backed off a little bit on, okay, if you're not complying, do we really have the right to withhold funding? It's a hot topic, folks, because people are either really for or they're really against this. And I think a lot of that is because, like so many topics, there's been some media spin on it and not all the information is in a Facebook post or in a real short snippet. So I just want to say this, I think we all can agree, teaching our students to treat one another equally, respect one another equally, and for us to provide equal opportunity, accept one another as a group and respect their individualities alike. I think we were all taught that growing up. We need to continue to instill that in our children. And while I think most of us here are very cautious of things that we would call extremism, no one likes things that are extreme. It's all this way or this way. And I think that's what this bill is trying to prevent. There is a particular piece of curriculum that some consider extreme. So they're trying to come up with this legislative way to ban it. The rub is this, how do you define divisive? Because the very same groups that may not want anything close to a CRT taught in school might also not support something that's been called cancer or cancel culture. You know, where all of a sudden Dr. Seuss books were taken away and Disney movies were taken away. And that's kind of the thing that can happen when you start dividing, you know, when the government starts defining things like devices. And, you know, that, that sort of thing. So at this point, I think there's a lot in flux. I'm not recommending that we have to take any kind of position. Lori, in years past, when there's been proposed legislative, legislation like Ed Choice, for example, as a board, we wrote a letter in opposition to Ed Choice in the way it was written. Not entirely. I, I don't think that there's enough definition in this right now for us to maybe take a position on. But each board member has the right to make a motion and ask that we take some sort of action at any time. And then the group can decide if we're going to do that collectively or not. But that's, that's where we're at right now. And there was a lot of info. Any questions? You look like you're thinking, bye.
Just look like I am.
I always love to know your thoughts.
Right now, I'm kind of not really, just listening and trying to absorb and feeling like I should have studied and searched into some of the things you're talking about, so I know a little more about it.
I think the Ed Choice thing, all we're doing is muddying the waters even more. I mean, I'm all about choice. For me personally, I want to be able to choose where my kid is going to get educated. I have that right. To try to say that my tax dollars need to go to a certain area, any of my other tax dollars, I don't necessarily have it pigeonholed into one certain area. I mean, we all pay state taxes. But I don't get a say as to where my state taxes go. I mean, it's, it's cra- I mean, we could look at the whole big picture of everything. And I mean, the state lottery is supposed to be helping out schools. It's like a pencil line when it comes to school funding, you know, but we have no say in that. But now we want to have a say in where our tax dollars go for our education. And it could very easily take away from public schools, which is what the state constitution says. The state needs to provide every child in the state of Ohio. The private schools are fine. I'm not against any of that other stuff. But I think the other thing is, is Chantel, like what you said was, it needs to be a level playing field. If the state is telling us, as Fremont City Schools, for a student to graduate and be a graduate of Fremont Ross in the state of Ohio, they have to have this, 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 and this, and this. Yet I can go somewhere else and there isn't this, 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 and this. And the big thing is, is people will say, well, you get state funding and I, maybe a private school doesn't take state funding. But it doesn't matter. We're talking about the education of a child. We're not talking about dollars out of our pockets. What are we saying is the requirement of a student from the state of Ohio to graduate high school, period? I don't care how much money it takes or what they say it takes for that child to graduate. It should be the same across the board wherever they go. And now we're just saying, well, I want to be able to have choice, and so do I. And that's why we have open enrollment. Everyone can go, you can go online, you can go virtual, you can go to this district, that district, anything else. Crap, you can probably find transportation to about every school you want to anymore because everybody just crosses school lines and there's no respect for school boundaries half the time anyway. But, so we have all kinds of choices, but I understand it's tax money. But my gosh, there has to be some sort of, you've got to define that first before you start tossing out all these choices. It's just insane. Well, I want my tax dollars to go here. Why, I want my tax dollars to go a lot of places. If I want to have a say in it, then I need to go run for state legislature or something and try to make a difference there. But to just put it in this, it's ridiculous. It's just going to make everything a bigger hot mess than what it already is. And then to add to that, that's part of school funding. School funding is, I mean, we were just talking about it at Vanguard Sentinel. Two years from now, on the biennial budget, it could be completely different than what it is now with the fair school funding that we have. And then treasurers get to change their whole system once again. So it's, it's a hot mess. They could just figure it out and make it simple. It's a pretty simple concept. They just start tossing in everything else and it just gets muddied. It drives me crazy. But anyway, sorry.
I do have the thought. I, I was listening to most of math features. And, and, you know, there are the extremists, okay? So in focusing on the critical race theory and the other one that is, okay, I, we had to be careful not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, okay? And mentioning, or because we do have, you know, there are inequalities because of just family, just because of people. I liked what the, the, the teacher said. We know that there are students that have, you know, that are here, and then there are students that came in with, with little. And that they have a method of integrating that course and the coursework with those students so that they don't feel that they're targeted. I mean, everybody, they're doing things on a, I was so impressed with that. I loved it. Okay? And I think that's part of, of, of reaching kids where they at, where they're at, which would touch on some diversity issues because, you know, we just have a diverse population, we have a diverse. And then with, with the pandemic, it didn't really help anything. But I, but I don't think we should still lose our focus because we're not focusing on critical race theory that these kids need, that there may be students that need a little extra because they are not where the other students are because of possibly their, their background.
I think that's a great point. I'm very glad you, you stated that in case there's anybody watching that hasn't seen other board meetings. You were right, that demonstrated the inequalities and gaps and so on. And I love the way that you have implemented means to address those. We saw that tonight. We saw that with what Shari has brought in. She's been to our meetings that have touched on iniquities according to race, according to military families, all of those identified areas. And there are ways to bridge the gaps, bring us together, recognize issues without adopting things that some would consider extreme. Whether it's extreme or not, I'm going to leave that to the individual to say. But I do like that you have put together a means of addressing all of those issues. They're definitely part of our school. I wanted to end, unless there's any more comments, questions, just two statements I thought it ended on. While at the, the center, I saw two things that I thought were very relevant, quotes from President Hayes. A lot of what we're talking about here, you'll hear different opinions based on party. Everything's just kind of split among parties, it seems. And I love his quote that says, "He who serves his country best serves his party best." So who serves the group, takes care of the individuals. I really like that concept. And the role that education plays in all those iniquities. He says, "Universal suffrage should rest upon universal education and permanent provision should be made for the support of free schools by the state governments and if need be supplemented by legitimate aid from national authority." So I think he made it pretty clear where he stands on the accessibility of public education for everybody. That's all for tonight.
I just said one thing, it kind of fits into legislative, kind of. And I don't know, John, I know this has been kind of a little bit of an issue, but masks on buses. I know there's some confusion and everything, but the CDC has released that as of February 25th.
Over the weekend, yeah.
They are no longer requiring masks on public transportation federally. Because that was always the federal thing.
Right.
And we had to, even though the state didn't recognize it as public and all that hot mess of, of a thing. Now that has gone away. So now there's, it seems correct, not an issue. You can still choose to wear a mask if you choose, but it is not required on a school bus.
That is correct. It happened Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. I guess we'll, just because it's on the agenda, we'll have our first hearing of the public. If anyone would like to address the board. Andrew, you're the only one left in the room back there. And I'm pretty sure you're set back there, so we'll just move on from there and go on to the recommendations of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board. Just one last thing, that, that math thing, I've seen that in action and it's, it, it's a beautiful thing. It really is. It's everything they said it was. It's fabulous. All right, item one, calling resignations, Alila Cluck as a cook is resigning. And then item two, we've got a couple of appointments. Adriana Heiser, a teacher, she's actually taken this semester of art. We had an art opening here at Fremont Middle School, so she'll be finished filling that, excuse me. B is Lawrence Harkness as a bus driver. And then item three, we have two athletic supplementals. Nicole Colasa, who was actually one of our teachers here this evening. She's varsity assistant softball coach. And Nicole Mendoza is middle school track. Thank you.
Hey, can I get a motion to approve items one through three, please? Motion by Mrs. Ray. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spirit. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes, I have a little discussion.
Yes.
Speaking of our bus drivers, it's so wonderful to see someone being hired. How, how are we doing with that?
A little better. And actually, we got a couple in the, more in the pipeline even. So there's a little, a little daylight in that area. And I have not driven for two weeks, so it's, it's a little better. Although I do have to spend Tuesday night, Wednesday night, and Thursday night this week during, for my re-certification, excuse me, re-certification classes. I have to drive to Bowling Green the next three nights to get re-certified. Every five years, you have to go back and get your license redone. So I'll be doing that this week, but still doesn't mean I hope not to drive anymore. Yeah, thanks for asking, but it is a little better.
Great.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Spirit two?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Motion's approved. Moving on to treasurer.
Tonight, really, all I have for approval from the board is some supplemental, or permanent appropriations. We have some for the class of 2021 softball supplies. And then that last item is for us to be able to purchase the buses. We were offered grant money and we had only had a little bit appropriated beginning of the year. And this is the rest, so that we can buy some new buses, which we're all very excited about.
Can I get a motion to approve item four, please?
I'm moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Laird. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mrs. Spirit two?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. Next up, board member communications. Let's go down the line. Mrs. Bloom?
Well, it was nice to have the kids in here and they seemed like they have a lot of fun. I wish we had that when we were in school and they had done better in math, maybe. And I'm excited because that's the school my grandson goes to and he's got Mrs. Caden. And I'm excited that he gets to start doing this. He tried to teach him something. He's like, I know, I know. And he doesn't, but, and the Spanish, I'm really excited that they are bringing it in as a CCP, the college course. My daughter took it. She wanted to take it at UC, but she, she didn't want to put the time in because it was like an everyday thing. But she'd come home and she'd just speak and start saying stuff. I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. Picked it up after a while, but she did very well. And she had Mrs. Ward a couple of times. So, but it was very nice to see all of that and exciting for it to be coming around.
Mrs. Spirit two?
I want to thank Mrs. Ward for coming in and doing the presentation. And the students willing to do the video so that we could, you know, see their, what they're learning in their interaction. I thought it was great and I did understand everything they said.
No. What is the word for throw up exactly?
I also like to thank the, the, all the staff and the students that came in and the parents for bringing their children in that joined us tonight and especially Abigail that was, taught us her game, Chantel and I. It was nice. It was nice to see the interaction and she was like really into it and, and just showing us how to play. And it was, it was good. I liked it. And congrats to Vi for her receiving her star recognition.
Thank you.
And, and it was nice to see the children in the audience and hearing the little voices singing, saying the Pledge of Allegiance with us. That's great.
Okay, Ms. Laird?
I echo most of what these ladies said. Something about having the children present is that reminder of who we're here to serve. You know, gets it back to everything that we do, everything we're voting on. And, and they're just precious. So it's, it's so nice to see them. I really like the format the workshops have taken because as parents and community members can watch these, they can see what's going on in 21st century education. And again, as we get questions about things, we can remember, oh, that was in a board meeting and go back and look at a date. Hey, watch this particular meeting. You know, you can see that in live action or hear the discussion on that. Such a better reference than just minutes. So, and I appreciate the students and parents very much. Thank you.
And I mirror what my colleague said. Was just very impressed with, with the student interaction. Freaked out when I realized that he was going to do cards with me. I said, all the games now. I never played cards. So, but it was, it was really, really nice and he was proud that he could teach me. Just in general, and for our buses, that was last time we got, how many buses do we get now?
Five coming this time.
Five, awesome. And then I hope we're getting the, the bus drivers to match the buses. That sounds pretty good.
We're retired if you hold buses, not all drivers, hold buses.
It's nice to have the students here. They're, you know, our focus, what, what we're all about. So thanks for, Mrs. Hurt, for making all this happen. That's it.
Okay, pretty much the same thing as everybody else. Thanks to the parents and the students. Denise for, and the staff members for everybody coming in. And like everyone else has said, it's great to just have people in the audience and can get to learn. If there's any questions, I'm going to send them to Keegan, who was teaching me about ones and tens. So Keegan, you're on the clock now, so. But yeah, congratulations to the orchestra they just had.
Yes, unanimous ones in their state contest on Friday afternoon.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Rushed it. I actually got to catch them today. They were taking pictures with this giant trophy that they got for their state competition. They just, and Ms. Hammer was just over the moon, proud of them as we all are.
Yeah, absolutely. Great job, guys and ladies for everything and all the hard work that you put in. And once again, it's just another space in the, in the new high school where we get to help those students create even more, hopefully. So the longer that we're in there, so. Other than that, I think that is it for the night. So if I could get, if there's.
So will the orchestra be doing an encore?
I don't know. Maybe we could, maybe we work something out.
That would sound, that would be awesome.
Announce that to the community and.
Yeah. I don't know how I missed that. So how many, how many groups were they or?
Well, this is a whole group, 25 of them or so, I think, in orchestras. Does that sound about right?
I mean, how many districts were they competing with?
Oh, boy, that I don't know. It's, it's the whole, they do like regions of the state, so I'm sure there's 30 or 40 orchestras, yeah.
I know they're busy kids, but we can fit 25.
Hey, we've got a PAC now.
Well, we've got another, maybe our student of the month night, we could have them play a song for us at the Performing Arts Center since we'll be over there again. March, our, our second March meeting, we're back in the PAC. It's our last student of the month or the year.
Oh, okay.
So maybe we could work out something, hear them in that space.
That would be great.
An ensemble, if I can't get the whole group, maybe.
I'd be more than happy to be sitting down in the comfy seats and they can have the whole stage. That's their place, not ours, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else from anybody? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ray. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Spirit two?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion carried. Meeting's adjourned.